To go on Mondays and Tuesdays, we don't open up till four o'clock.
Yep.
So it'd be like, you know, four to eight, nine o'clock at night, you know, four to nine. And then on, uh, uh, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we open up at eleven, so it'd be like eleven till like nine at night, you know?
Yep.
Not a, not a huge, you know, I don't think it's a huge favor to ask, you know, uh, under the circumstances, you know? And, and, and it helps everybody, it helps that safety, it helps, honestly, it helps, you know, people that are, that want to get their food, you know, and not double mind.
So, you know, we got your email, and I've asked, you know, the town hall office to kind of work with you to fill out the proper requests that we can get before the board, whatever that possibly is.
Is this?
Do you have a public hearing?
Oh, so there'll be another hearing?
Well, we have to put on, we can't vote on anything, we have to have put on the agenda.
Yeah, I think it has to make, so.
Typically, you know, sometimes when we make parking changes, we have a little public hearing as well.
Yeah, and I think if this is a temporary change, you probably don't need any hearing, but we can discuss it with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, with everybody starting to come back now, and I mean, the slow months are the end of June and, and, you know, July, and now everybody's come back, sports are starting, everybody's getting their kids back to sports, I coach for home and school football, we're going into our sixteen season, everybody's back. So now we're seeing the, you know, influence of everybody showing up, and that means more cost, you know, more cost of miserable, everything else, you know? This is why I kind of held off for a while, but now it's, it's kind of a crunch time.
Well, thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you.
Was there original application? I actually thought that we had put that spot in there, but, you know, it was.
So the, the outside dining regulations didn't allow takeout spaces in the new construction house?
I thought we had discussed, you know, a one for five courses, because they were so disproportionately impacted, or I, I just don't remember any.
We did discuss it, but then it got removed down to three spots per restaurant.
Yes.
You know?
And then you also opened up, though, that if, if there was a special circumstance, we could have, I don't know, come back to the board and, and sort of see about that, like those other spots they had in front, but I didn't even want to talk about it because of the, the visit attraction. So, uh, see what you can do for me, I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Or is there anyone else on the agenda? Marion, first.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see everybody in this select room. Wow, haven't been here in a while. Okay, well, basically, I'm just here to give you a little bit of an update. This is just a calendar of our upcoming state primary. Um, yeah, I'll pass that, I'll pass it. So, as you all know, tonight on the agenda, I do have just a working, um, item where you're going to vote the warrant, okay? So the positions that'll be, um, be on the ballot for the state primary, um, you're going to take a look at that, I think, of your business items, but, um, for some of the new members that haven't gone through that process, um, that's just a routine. In addition, we have, um, uh, something called the Votes Act of 2022, which was recently passed by the state legislature, and they now have a requirement, sort of tightening up some of the clerical aspects of monitoring, how, uh, police detail gets assigned. And so normally, I would just call up the police chief, and I would just schedule the workers that I would need for any kind of election. But the state has asked that the select board actually take a vote to assign the, the opportunity for me to do that. So there's also a motion in your working packet, I should work further down the list tonight, for you folks to take that action. So I'll just continue to do the work that we always do, but we are just basically informing you, um, that we will be hiring police detail. We do have the option under the act, uh, new Vote Acts, to also hire police detail for early voting in person. Uh, we've had early voting in person now since 2016, some of you have probably participated in it, most people love it. I actually enjoy it too, because you get to sort of not have so much stress on election day, because you get to see, you know, maybe twenty, thirty percent of the folks get through the line ahead of time. We are a small community, we have sixteen thousand registered voters, and, um, at this time, in my professional opinion, I don't think we need a police detail at the town hall, because we are here during the normal business hours, um, and so I try to save a little bit of money when I can here and there, which I think you guys all know that about me, my little thriftiness. So we won't be assigning that, uh, police detail, just for the actual primary, and then I'll come back to you again in November with another motion that would just be rudimentary for November. So essentially, the voter deadline for registration always used to be twenty days in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, um, and this act has pushed that to ten days, to give more access and opportunity for people to register and have hopefully less disenfranchisement. So, um, that's now going to be Saturday, August 27th, for this primary on September 6th. The town hall will be open from nine AM to five PM to accept registrations, and then coincidentally, we are doing the early voting for six days instead of the old law, which was eleven. So the early voting also starts on Saturday, August 27th, so we're going to go ahead and be open for people to come in and register, and if they want to go right in and early vote the day they registered, they can do that. So Massachusetts is making some headway on some of those provisions for access. Uh, the deadline to change a party affiliation for a state primary, because in the Commonwealth, if you are an independent voter, also known as unenrolled, you will go ahead and be able to pull any ballot that you want when you walk up. Democrat, Republican is all we have this election cycle. There's no minor party candidates, nor, um, some of the, uh, what's the word, Green Rainbow Party, things like that. So, um, nonetheless, if someone wants to change their party from Republican to Democrat or Democrat to Republican, they can do that also up until five o'clock on Saturday, August 27th. We have a deadline now under the new law to request a vote by mail ballot. Now, some of you may have just recently noticed about Fourth of July, you received a vote by mail postcard in the mail. Okay, Secretary of the Commonwealth mailed those out to the six point eight million voters across the Commonwealth, and so our office is fast and furiously processing those with the help of a lot of our coworkers. Uh, we recently just mailed out last Friday about seven hundred and fifty, um, which is a lot, but it's not really that many when you have sixteen thousand, uh, registered voters. So we're kind of hoping that that's part of the reason for me to come tonight, is to talk about the primary and just really talk about election participation in general. I mean, as your election's official, I don't care what election it is, I just want a nice, good turnout, I want people to have access, and I want, um, the facility to be, you know, properly noticed and properly signed and all of that. So, um, we will have a vote by mail deadline, it would be Monday, August 29th at five PM. You can either mail in that card that you got from the government, or you can hop on the line, online to the town's website. Jennifer Caparella just posted up, um, on the front page, you'll see a red, white, blue vote button as we standard, as we normally do. You click onto that, and it's really exciting, because it launches you to our new vote page. So Beth and I and the staff have worked on working with, um, more visual buttons on our website to get people's attention. There's a lot of words when you talk about election, and I know I could be a very long and lengthy memo writer, so, um, I'm trying to be a little bit more creative, and so we've created these vote buttons, and so when people go to that homepage and they click on it, if they lost that postcard or they don't know what to do, just click on that, and it'll get you to a real user-friendly, um, system, and it'll just link right to the PDF, they can fill it out and send it right into us. We, of course, have the drop boxes, like we've always had since COVID, at the front and the rear of town hall, for people to drop the applications as well as the ballots that are executed. The state also is still holding on to the absentee ballot deadline, so now that we're doing early voting, people think there is no absentee, but there still is. So early voting is technically no excuse voting, you can just come on and do whatever you want to do that works for your schedule. And the absentee is either you're religiously believed, you're absent from town, or you're physically disabled. So if folks fit into that category, they can also come up until twelve noon on Friday, September 2nd, which is the Friday right before the vote. So essentially, in this little handout that I gave you, and we will post this up online tomorrow, early voting starts, uh, Saturday, the 27th, as I mentioned, nine AM to five, and then it'll be the rest of all of the normal working hours, the business hours in the town hall. And we hold the early voting in the Winchester Room, uh, will be set up, we're doing the pull tab check-in again, so hopefully that'll be nice and efficient for everybody to get in and get out. And so that's essentially it, I just wanted to really say hello and also say welcome to the new select men and women who are elected from last March, because, uh, it's been a crazy time, we haven't really seen each other, so. Do you have any questions and have any answers?
I just wanted to get my quick note for the website, um, so we had initial conversation about maybe trying to hire somebody out to do that, and with, um, Morgan, who is fairly new employee to the town clerk's office, and Jen's expertise, we were able to do all the work in-house, and I think it turned out great, so I think it's a great collaboration, I appreciate your, um, leadership and your wonderful enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're excited about that.
Marion, the primary election itself on September 6th will be at the high school, right?
Yes, thank you for that, I'm chatting away here. Um, yes, it'll be at Winchester High School, same as we did the town election, it's going to be seven AM to eight PM on the second floor. We're going to have the whole gymnasium this time, we were a little tight when we tried it the first time. And I also wanted to get folks to be confident and, and comfortable to know, we're trying this out, okay? Winchester had four locations for my whole tenure here, almost sixteen years, um, we're checking this facility out, okay? It may not work for the presidential, we may not be able to pull it off in one location when we have sixteen thousand voters coming all at once, or maybe nine thousand coming at once. So right now, I'm, I know we're going to get some feedback, I know we're going to probably get some criticism, but we're going to walk through it and try to just measure that and see what's the best decision for the community, because we are rebuilding Lynch, we've got a lot of traffic issues, as you all know, downtown, and parking is at a premium. So, um, we are working with the police department, and the engineering office has been great to design mapping so that we can have the school teachers, um, park in a different area, because ironically, with the state primary on Tuesday, the sixth, the students are in school.
Yes, so do you have any questions? So are they in school that day?
They are in school that day, and it's, uh, I'm a little nervous, to tell you the truth, but we're going to do it. It's like the third day of school, um, yeah, so.
So they're off already?
Right, yeah, we can't get the day off. Well, ultimately, we were actually going to have the election, I think it was supposed to be the thirteenth, but then the government had done some things, and whatever happened, happened, and a secretary said, we're going to do it on the sixth. At that point, when they made that decision last spring, there wasn't enough time to have the school districts change their professional development. So we're working with Frank Hackett, Dr. Hackett's been great, staff has been great, we're all working in collaboration to make it sort of as painless as, as possible. We are moving, uh, the teachers over to Shore Road, we're going to be possibly doing some shuttle buses from Jen's parking lot, if, uh, we feel after the early voting statistics come in, that we might still have a higher voter turnout, so we're going to be checking out all those different options, um, so we can make it as, as smooth as possible. But ultimately, once we evaluate this state election for governor in November, then Linda and Angela Love, the new assistant, fairly new assistant, uh, election official with me, will, will try to decide what's best, and we may come back here and collaborate with you and decide, you know, maybe we're going to do Winchester High, but we're also going to do, you know, Vincent Island on the other side of town, we've got to kind of work through that, so.
Marion, we heard had many people comment what to access, you know, when you can pull to, whether it's vehicles, plus it's sort of easier to get in, going to the second floor, and that kind of stuff, we're here.
You know, what's interesting is we got a little, we, I would say almost fifty-fifty, like, people either really liked it, and they loved the ability to see more people, because you're seeing your whole town, you get all eight precincts there, so that's a whole community piece that people loved, um, that was really positive. But then we had just as many comments with like, oh, you know, we accessed the, it's a long hallway, uh, the staircase, or the elevator was booked, and I had to wait, and things like that. So, um, the beauty of the high school is the fact that this Votes Act has really put Massachusetts in the forefront to doing early voting. And so this early voting at mail commitment really should drive up our numbers, that people are going to vote ahead of time, and they're going to get that paper ballot in the mail, and there's going to be less and less showing up at the polls. So we're just trying to measure that, and, I mean, my hope is, in a community like Winchester, you know, I may get thirty-five, forty percent that are going to be early voting and vote by mail. And so when I look at that number, then I feel like a little bit of sigh of relief, because I can handle seventy thousand voters in a facility like that, so. So we're evaluating all that as it goes, but if you have any questions, or you want to even come down and see how it all works, I got, uh, lots of voting machines down there, lots of pipeline.
Can somebody who turns eighteen right before the, uh, primary, September 6th, can they register now when they're seventeen?
Yes, we've been doing that for a long time. Pre-registration, they can go online to our website, and click to that new page, and it'll show them the link to register. We keep them in the pre-registration queue, that was an amendment a couple of years ago that the state put in, it's actually really efficient. We're getting the kids when they get their driver's license, and then we automatically, the system, every morning, the staff logs in, and it says you have, you know, five birthdays today, and so here we go, we'll put those students in. Um, and if someone turns after the deadline, which is August 27th, the state, of course, you know, we make that exception, making the difference from 29th of August or September 2nd, of course, they can participate.
So for some of the seniors at the high school, will be the most convenient location to vote?
Yes, yes, and.
I'm sure it'll turn out.
And, and also lots of volunteers with the students too. We're working with, September 6th, I won't have student volunteers, because the poor kids are third day of school, I'm not going to ask them to volunteer community service, but outside, then we sign them all up for November, for sure, so.
Because I remember, uh, in the spring, you were saying that if for folks who are had trouble with access, that you were doing something, bringing ballots to them, is that something they're doing?
The handicapped accessibility, we, we can do that, we're, we're still kind of thinking that the better approach might be to encourage, um, the folks who are in that situation to communicate with our office directly that they're in, uh, that disability, and we have, uh, a provision under Mass Law where they can apply for that as an automatic, and then I automatically mail the ballot to them. Although, having said that, people still want to come to the polls, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an American thing, right? I mean, we want to participate, and, um, so Linda and I will kind of measure that, and if we can get some coworkers and the secretary of state agrees to having a sort of satellite within the high school on the first floor, then we can try to do that too, okay? Kind of customer service, okay? Okay? Any other questions?
So we need to vote?
Yes, I'm not sure if we're voting right now, or if Patty's doing it in other business.
Nope.
You can do it right now?
I do have a supplemental agenda in the business.
Got it.
Now, do they also have to vote the keys to?
No, they don't have to vote, they can just sign the warrant, please, and then just the quick motion I, I can there for you.
Um. Do you have? Uh, I would be allowed for the assignment of a proper number of police details to secure the safety of voters, coworkers, and staff at elections, the security of the transfer of election materials and ballots to the town of Winchester. Said assignment list of Winchester police officers will be issued by the police chief to the town clerk not less than twenty days before the election.
All those fair?
Aye.
Great.
Thanks, Rayon.
Thank you. Good to see you, everybody.
You too.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, next up on the agenda, we have Roger McPeek from Capital Planning, Jimmy Johnson. Come on, Beth. How are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Good, good. Thank you for having us here this evening, we've, uh, come seeking your help. Um, as you know, most of you know anyway, we run a capital pre-lean in this town, and we have run into just a mountain of projects this year, and we have pretty good visibility for a year, another year out, and there are things that are just not going to be able to be accomplished by, through the stabilization funds. So we're hoping to start a conversation where we can find a way to put some of these, uh, projects together, perhaps, and if you've got a secret stash of cash somewhere, you can do it that way. Most likely, I think, we're looking at a debt exclusion override. Um, the, the project that sort of ultimately broke, uh, the stabilization funds backs were the replacement for the HVAC system, you know, thirty years old, I'm pretty sure, uh, in, in this building, um, and that's coming in at our estimate right now around six point three billion below. If you look at other things, other projects that we have going on in this building, you're probably looking at a total of ten million dollars worth of projects in the town hall. We have other things that are going on at the schools that add on another two million dollars that are safety related, that we really can't look at pushing out and continue to push out, we'll call it TESA, there's black work up at, uh, up at Lincoln that's deteriorating. We have windows that need to be replaced in the, the library as well. We have, that we can see just in the out years, roof replacements at Amber Rose, I know you know, everybody says, Amber Rose, we just did that, it's coming up twenty years now as well, and we have work, uh, roof replacement work going on at the call, but we can see coming up, those are million dollar, million and a half dollar projects, and those are things that we're going to have to find some way to do, the stabilization funds just will not be able to support. So we're hoping to start, uh, I'll just point out, engineering's a bit of, uh, one, one and a quarter million dollars worth of project requests this year for tra, for, uh, traffic improvements, and that's not construction, that's some construction, but an awful lot of that is just engineering work. For some of these things, I mean, you know, you look up there at, uh, Regent Lockland, and we all know that that is just a disastrous intersection, we all know that we need to do something about that, and we can't just keep turning our eyes away from it. So we're hoping that we can start this process with you, maybe find a, a package of projects that the town could find acceptable, um, and that we can move forward with some sort of a debt exclusion override sooner rather than later.
Well, you said a good job, you did a really good job. First of all, I would personally thank you for the money you're allocating right now from the Accupoints to put its capital projects, so thank you very much, that sets a direction for us to go, hopefully you'll be able to provide the traction funding for it, thank you in advance. Like Roger said, this is a request for the future of Winchester. We go back twenty years or so, these buildings don't last forever, they're high-use buildings, they're the assets of the community, they're part of what makes Winchester Winchester. So we want to keep it, we want to make, you know, people say, oh, this building we just built, I had six million dollars for HVAC, when we thought it was going to be minimal. We've got windows we're talking about here, we're talking about slate roofs, you know, do we want to town barrel roofs? I don't think so. Uh, we've got, oh, let's see, we've got ten million dollars in this building, we've got electrical, we've got fire services, um, probably internet, but we haven't even mentioned that. So we're trying to plan for the future, and we're trying to ask your help to give us the direction to do that. It's important we take care of our assets, it's important we take care of our citizens, and it's important we take care of our employees. These are all intricate parts of Winchester, and we want to do a good job, and you know, we've done a pretty good job. You look over the last fifteen, twenty years, you've got a lot done. Uh, we've made up a long distance, you know, the stuff we've put on, we've got a lot of issues that have to be done, but with your help and your leadership, you can get done. We just need your support and to go out and muster the synergy, support, I mean, whoever thought we'd get people to just have capital for an override? You know, it's done by marketing, and it's done by being honest, and it's done by working all together, so thank you.
Thank you both for coming this evening, you know, I invited you both here, um, to really start this discussion, because, you know, what I'm hearing is, you have, as you indicated, the amount of projects that are just, you know, the costs are escalating faster than we ever imagined, and, you know, we're just, we're not making headway at this very juncture, given where we are, um, you know, with inflation and, and interest and stuff like that, so, and cost of supply, so we need to do something, kind of something drastic in order to kind of turn the tide and to mantle Roger, just one, you know, I felt like he's filling up the Titanic with a coffee cup sometimes, so, you know, we need to, we need to, in my opinion, we need to do something here, um, and what that something is, I'm not exactly sure, but, um, you know, we need to help them out, they have a thankless job, it's capital after all, right? It's not very exciting.
You're in a really big coffee cup.
Yeah.
Just take a wheelbarrow.
But I think we need to do something, that's, that's my opinion, but, you know, certainly, um, what I would recommend to the board is that we, um, you know, we could, we further this discussion, I mean, John's our representative on the board, on Capital, maybe John and I can sit down, you know, Capital, these individuals, kind of put together maybe a list, the staff, what, you know, what they would be proposing, and we kind of go from there, um, but open it up to discussion.
Yeah, so I have, um, so one thing is, um, I would rather see, I, I mean, it's fine if we do a debt, a list and a debt exclusion, I would rather see, we put a list and we do an operating to the stabilization funds. So if it's ten million dollars of debt exclusion, and the debt service is a million dollars, we do an operating for a million dollars to the stabilization fund to pay for those projects, we immediately bond those projects. We immediately bond those projects, and then long-term, that builds up capital, right? So that we don't have to go for another debt exclusion for more projects ten years down the line, because as those projects get paid off, that ex, that money, that million plus two and a half percent every year goes into the stabilization funds, right? So.
With, with inflation running at eight point six percent and us growing at two and a half, we're, we're going backwards right now.
I understand, but if we, but if we do a debt exclusion, we, it goes back to zero, right? There's nothing going into the stabilization funds, right?
No perfect answer, all we're looking for is a plan.
So that would make my.
We'll make it a good plan, we'll get all the.
So that would be my vote for that, and then the other thing is understanding, like, what the timeline is, because we have a Lynch debt exclusion coming up as well, so where is the vote?
No, there's definitely, you know, details like that to figure out, um, yeah, you know, one of the new members, so, didn't we do that the last time, the, the, uh?
Yeah.
We did that, and what did it add, capital?
About one point two.
Yeah.
Because we eliminated retiring debt, which was a good thing, because every time anybody wanted anything in town, they said, let's just take retiring debt, and so that secured that money into the stabilization funds, but it showed up as a two million dollar increase, but it was about a one point two million dollar increase in reality.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to make the same comment as Morgan, I think we've been talking about this for a while, kind of, you know, we always think of, um, you know, an operating override, it's, you know, straight going towards, you know, our operating budget, which is, you know, traditionally what it's used for, but now we're, we're at the point where we are moving backwards, even if we do a debt exclusion, and, um, it's, as you mentioned, eight percent interest, and all our projects are coming in higher, and, uh, we're, um, you know, as we see with the town hall project, so, um, it, I, I think what's a little bit trickier, and where we always get to this spot where we have another larger operating override coming up, you know, in the next couple of years as well, right? So we just have to message it, um, I think, as early as possible to the community, that these are really all serving kind of different purposes, and that the capital operating override really would be to maintain, uh, a higher level of funding in the year mark for the stabilization funds, right? I mean, that's, that's what we'd be looking for, so, um, uh, and, and in a sense, it would, it could be a lower number, right? I mean, I think that's the benefit of it, right?
Right, it's just a number for the debt service.
It just won't go away.
So if ten million dollar number is a million dollar, or wherever the debt service is.
Yeah, we always seem to, you know, think of debt exclusion overrides and go for these big numbers for big projects, but really, I think what capital needs is to have a little bit of a buffer, you know, for some of those projects that are building up and costing a lot, and we also have been spending, as you said, a, a lot on, uh, uh, transportation and, uh, traffic in, uh, in the past several years, which we hadn't, we really neglected in the past, and, you know, from the master plan reaching out to the community, that's the number one concern, so, um, we've got a lot of infrastructure besides the traffic stuff that's come in, so we're, um, we just, uh, can't, can't keep our head above our purse, so.
Um, one thing I'd like to thank Mike, uh, because of the Johnson Road, which we just finally done.
Yeah, thank you.
And it was a project that he started six, seven, eight years ago, a long time ago, because I, I remember that. It's a great project, it's a great project, uh, interboards, working together with the state, engineering, town staff, this project, we should be proud of, took too damn long, but it's done. Now, that intersection is a much safer intersection, I know it because I go through a couple, three times a day, at least, round trip, and, you know, those are the things we have to strive for, we have to address the traffic, and that's a perfect example of working long-term and getting it done in one citizen, thank you, my love.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
And, you know, thank you for doing, um, well, we, um, I hope I'll write a postdoc with some church training, can't be on any right now, but that project's.
Want to be a church?
Yeah, yeah, that project's coming, and it's going to make it a lot safer for anybody around town, especially that uses a amen, so, these projects do work, take a long time, but you better realize it's going to get done, we all work together and devote our time and effort to it. Oh, that's your problem. We just select.
Waterfield and Mystic Island Parkway, that was from stabilization funds, right? That was $700,000 from the stabilization.
Yeah, even Main Street.
Main Street and Main Street.
Main Street and Water Street, you know? But, you know, you look at those, and all of a sudden, you say, wow, it worked. Takes a long time to get there, but once you're there, you don't realize it. So it's nice to bring those things up. And so people know what we're working on. Jay's with his roads and sidewalk programs. It's working. This town's a lot better physical asset place than it was 10, 15 years ago. Because we all work together, we've got the money from capital. We're diligent, might be stingy, but we get it done. And when we need money, we come and ask again and again and again.
I think we found in the last, in the last $10 million override, so it's a pretty big override. Now, the residents just want to know what it's paying for, right? And we put together a list, it goes in one sheet, right? This is what it's paying for, and this is where it's going to go. And it wasn't overwhelming, right? And so I think that as long as, Jimmy, you said, as long as we're open, we're honest about what it's going to pay for, and we put it in one sheet what it's going to pay for, I think the residents will realize that that's worth paying for, to maintain our buildings and our roads.
So are you okay with John working with capital?
John's a great guy.
I may, you know, kind of put that initial list together, come back, you know, further the conversation. Also, you know, working with staff to really discuss a timeline here that's, you know, doable, given where we, where we fall with Lynch and, you know, a potential operating override potentially, so. If that makes sense.
From our perspective, provided it moves forward quickly, that's, time is of the essence in this case. Everything is just getting so much more expensive.
There you go. All right, so why don't we do that?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good rest of summer.
You too. See you later. Next up, the Griffin Museum, Kristi Dixon. I don't know if everyone's met Kristi yet. She's the new executive director.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your time. As I convert, I'm Kristi Dixon. I'm the new executive director at the Griffin Museum. I'm joined tonight by one of our board members, Michael Burka. We are here tonight to talk about our land lease. As you know, the Griffin is turning 30 years old this year. We invested early on $200,000, and then in 2012, increased that amount to $225,000. We are coming to the select board to ask.
You can use that mouse to control.
And I have my very pretty presentation for you as well. We are coming to ask to have those funds released so that we can reinvest back into the building. We're calling the campaign to, to work on the building picturing the future while honoring the past. We have a year full of capital events that we are hoping to raise additional funds for. We are looking at a number of projects here in the museum to shore up the museum and its facility. This slide talks about what we've done in our first 30 years. We've had over 1,200 exhibitions. We've showcased over 9,000 photographs and 873 artists just in our Winchester location. The building has had a lot of love, and many people threw it. When we opened in 1992, we had under 100 Griffin members, and today we have over 1,700 in six, on six continents. So we have members from all over the world coming to the Griffin, either in person or by Zoom at this point. The pandemic really taught us a lot about how to reach our constituents. In-person events, we have well over 1,000 attendees for artist receptions and rentals, and that doesn't include our average daily attendees. We increased our presence online last, since 2020 with the pandemic, so 7,000 attendees over the last two years. Again, increasing the visibility for the Griffin. We have well over 1,000 plus that just do walk-ins into the Griffin each year. So we also use the facility as an event rental space. As you can see, pre-pandemic, we had 40 total event rentals. And since the pandemic, we've had 23, and that's only been a year, a little over a year. So the, the facility is being found by many brides or mitzvahs, receptions events. We continue to fill up and work and be open as a community partner to Winchester and those that are coming into town. We also, as a community partner, you will have received in your inbox two letters. One from the Winchester Cultural District, as well as one from the Chamber of Commerce, who we've been a member of for the at least past 10 years. As a community partner, we have created the Public Art Project Fence, which is located throughout the town during the summer. We work with Winchester High School to produce a teen photo program called Photosynthesis. This week, we start Art in Winchester, so we'll be hosting the reception event on Thursday night. I hope that you all will join us and come by to meet some of the local artists. We provide facilities for Winchester at lunch, Network for Social Justice. We are a cultural district fiscal sponsor, so as they are beginning to find their legs and put together their group, we are working with them as their 501(c)(3). And then we also are the starting point for the Liffey Race in June and one other thing. Wrong direction. So what we're asking for, we are asking for these funds back to be able to reinvest them in the building itself. We started that this year with a new floor being installed in our main gallery section in the beginning of March. We'd like the money to be used to put together, to create a new floor for the second half of the building. The roof is in need of repair. We'd like to enlarge our kitchen. If anyone has ever been to the Griffin and looked in the video there or in the slider there, that kitchen is pretty small. I think our bathrooms are larger than the kitchen. And as a catering facility or as a rental space, we would like to be able to accommodate larger catering facilities. Our plumbing is in need of love and attention, and we are looking at upgrading and updating our lighting and landscape. We also are technologically behind, and we would like to use some of those funds for technology upgrades to bring us into the 22nd century. Right now, because of the amount of online events we do, we do them from home. We cannot do them from the building because the building can't handle two people on a computer at the same time, on the Zoom at the same time, or broadband won't hold that. So our campaign start is $250,000, and we hope that adjusting that land lease, we're asking for between $100,000 and $150,000 back, will help us start making that process happen and reinvest in the building. So does anyone have any questions or concerns?
So just a little by-way background here, because I did some digging with Krista's help, you know, how this all came to be. So when the Griffin was started 30 years ago, or even before that, as part of the lease, town wasn't so sure, you know, if it was going to make it or not. And so they made them amongst improvements on Shore Road. They made them also put $200,000 into a bank account. And then that bank account was maintained as a separate account by the Griffin for years. I think in 2011.
Was that?
2011.
13. I think it started, the conversation started in 2011 and ended in 13.
And ended 13. That, that money was allowed to be invested into the Griffin's investment down portfolio, where I understand it's grown to 225,000 at this point, or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Somewhere in that neighborhood now.
So, you know, I did speak to one of the original select board members, who, you know, was involved in this years ago. And, you know, the thinking back then was, you know, we had this entity opening up. We hoped it made it, but, you know, we didn't want to be left, you know, within the orders of this building and everything. So clearly, the Griffin is a success story, it's a treasure to the town, it's probably the most underappreciated, in my opinion, aspects of the town. Probably because I get to see it every day, I mean, I have my office next to it. But it is a hub of rentals, you know, Krista mentioned the community partners. But I don't, you know, I don't remember a time when you've turned away, you know, somebody, anyone for a fundraiser, whether it's Winchester at lunch, Winchester's Hospital, or anybody.
And this year, and because of COVID, we're using that terrace more. There are so many people that want to be outside for their events. So like this month alone, we're doing three sets of evening projections. So you can come bring a blanket and picnic and sit out and watch photos in the night just.
And that terrace has become what, you know, what Rovering would lay doing, this money to build it was, you know, to a vision, which was a community gathering space.
Exactly. We have people having lunch there every day now.
So, you know, to me, you know, I asked Krista, you know, after meeting with her, to come before the board. We had legal look into what need to be done to, you know, to return some of this money. I think it's something we should consider doing, but it sounds like we need town meeting's approval in order to do that because it's a substantive change to the lease. So what I would like to see the board to do, and happy opening the discussion, is to, you know, put an article before town meeting to return, you know, $150,000 back to the Griffin because it's money being invested into the building. So if something should happen to the Griffin, we're going to be in a much better spot as a town with that, with those improvements made anyways.
Our plan is to continue to raise money throughout the year and close in August of 2023 to do all the improvements all at once, so that we don't keep chipping away at things. We want to just close and then reopen as a brand-new space in September and the fall.
So this would be an article that we would, you know, we would put on all town meetings. So with that, I don't think especially.
So would this be free cash that we're seeking or ARCA funds, or what would be the?
No, no, it's their money.
The funds, the funds already exist.
Already exist, okay.
Yeah, we just don't have access to them.
So we'd just be releasing it, so?
Yeah, it's their money. They've had it in an account for 30-plus years at this point. So we're just saying, you know, we'll reduce the amount that we'll, you know, held in there, but still be around $50,000 to $75,000, I think. We can confirm the numbers. But it would allow them to do, you know, use some of that funding to basically, you know, get their capital campaign underway, you know, make huge repairs. So the town's not paying anything, it's just.
Okay, yeah, it seems like a no-brainer, I guess, if that's.
Well, I mean, I mean, you know, I think, you know, playing devil's advocate, people might say, well, you know, well, what happens if the Griffin goes under, you know, the town's left holding this property? Well, I think, you know, if that's the case, and I hope it never is the case, it's a desirable spot. Some entity would want to go in there. And I also think we still have some money left, you know, for some of the projects we've left holding to, you know, be able to maintain the area for a while. So I think, you know, my understanding was the amount was still high because of the improvements on Shore Road, which they were really concerned about. But I think it's been a success story, so.
Yeah, I'd like to believe that we're a success story, the fact that we've made it for 30 years, you know?
It sounds like your popularity is very, more popular at this point than on the online.
Our previous executive director was determined to make sure that we were known all over. She did an amazing job at making sure that every photographer in every state and the union, among other places, is aware of the Griffin. You can travel to Chicago, to Atlanta, Los Angeles, New York, anywhere and say, I'm from the Griffin Museum. And they're like, oh, I have a friend that had a show there, or I had my show there five years ago. I mean, it's impossible to not know who we are, except here in town. So we're trying to change that, too.
Exactly.
I have a question, because the town's fiber loop reached the Griffin?
No, so that's a separate issue. That we're working on. But, you know, and we're checking it out with Comcast, I think it's Comcast, right?
Right, oh, yeah, we did get a bid for the fiber optic line. It would cost us $2,600 a month and a cost of $9,000 to install.
From the bridge side?
I'm from the, the train track. I guess it's over by the track or something, it has to come over that way. So that was clearly out of our budget. We're not big enough to be able to handle a $2,600 a month bill.
So the, so yes, they're out of our, our optic loop, but there's some options out there that they're currently exploring with some of the neighbors and stuff like that, to see if they can pick it back up, their fiber optic ones.
The high school's not that far, right?
We've got to go through a bridge.
Yeah, I have to.
Yeah, going the opposite direction, I think, would be.
There's a line filter, it's just.
Yeah.
We're working on that problem.
Got it.
Any other thoughts?
Any other questions?
Questions?
Oh, I know, I'm a Portland organ who had a show at the Griffin. I think the only question would be, and it's more looking towards bringing this to town meeting and anticipating some of the questions, is are there risks to the town at this point? If we're going to do that, or has it kind of that intent of holding that piece up really been handled by?
Then certainly, I mean, I think that's going to be a question, we can certainly address that. And we're also, it's not like we're giving back all that money, considering the amount, you know, you know, for, for that purpose. But I think, you know, after 30 years, you've certainly proven your worth to the town. And I also think you're, you know, I think the selling point is it's community partner. And, you know, we need help. If we're going to have that community partner, we'll want to, you know, all these different charities and organizations in town, we also need to help support, you know, the infrastructure of it, so. I think we could craft an argument, Tommy, but I definitely think it's a good point, it's something to be aware of, so. So if everyone's okay, we can, you know, just start working, you know, furthering this and start working on our bill for Tommy.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much.
Krista, we'll be in touch about working on that.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in and presenting.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, water use regulations and restrictions. We have some special guests.
What special?
How are you guys?
Hey, everyone. See everyone?
You too.
So, last week, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs updated the drought declaration across the state and the northeast and central regions. We're bumped up to a level three vertical drought. Level four is the highest it goes to, so we are close to the top of poor conditions in terms of, of the water. I don't know what, how, if you know how far below normal conditions we are, but.
I will talk to him about that.
Sure. So I worked with Jimmy and Jay over the past week to review this declaration with our legal counsel. Jimmy spoke to our RTHA and NASTI P. We've worked with consultants at Weston Sampson, just to kind of better understand what the requirements are in the town. We are required, have requirements under the Water Management Act because we have an active reservoir system. As you all know, the North Reservoir is basically down now because of the project we have going on. Stop me if you want to take over any of this. But so basically, that, that North Reservoir, which is in, our treatment plant is connected to the South Reservoir in the middle, and the South Reservoir are connected, you pump from the, from the north to the middle. In this case, because the water's still low, we've basically, in essence, taken that whole reservoir offline.
So, yeah, so, thank you, Beth.
Yep.
So Jimmy and I have both been here well over 30 years. This is the first time that anyone in the public works has come to ask for a ban. Beth did a great job explaining why. We have three reservoirs. We have the north, the middle, and the south. The south is where the treatment plant is. We utilize all three of those reservoirs during all seasons.
And Jay, where does it fed from?
So most of it is fed from the sky. And then we do it in supplement water from spot on, which is available, and we get that free.
That's great.
So it's a good deal. But right now, I don't know, I mean, we've been up to this old reservoir, it's pretty empty. That's never been done over another 80 years. That was man-made. Reason we had to get it down to a level so we can really get down to the toe of the dam to make sure we had no water coming in. We achieved it, but. We achieved it, but now we have no water, um, in that reservoir. But we do have, uh, the middle and the south, uh, right now, I believe we're at seventy percent, Jay?
Well, the, uh, the south's seventy, seventy-five percent full, the middle's about half full. Combined, they can last for a while, but with no north, the north pumps a million a day, always, for months and months and months, you don't have that. That reservoir holds a hundred eighty-seven point five million gallons. A hundred fifty million gallons had to be pumped out to satisfy the office of dam safety. To get that hundred fifty million back, it'll take a long time.
Take a few years.
Long time.
So that's really a, so, um, I don't know if you didn't remember, I think, Mikey, you were probably on the board, back in two thousand sixteen, we had, uh, you know, that drought, where we were doing the work up in the South Reservoir, and we had shut down the treatment plant and had to go on NWRA. So a good thing that we did many years ago in the eighties, when we did a lot of water work, we have an emergency connection, it's called Forest Street Connection, right at Forest and Isle. It's a twenty-four inch line, um, we can feed an emergency situation leaks, or if we have a real bad drought. NWRA is in really good shape still, they have five years' worth of water right now, as we speak. We like to use our water, uh, for many reasons, cheaper, and the other reason is, uh, if Mike can probably remember, we had a lot of calls when we. So long story short, the water comes from the South Reservoir, the treatment plant, it goes through, uh, South Porter Road goes down Main Street, and heads, it transitions line from Main Street to Washington, all the way to Woburn, up to Forest. Now, uh, in a few months, I predict, no matter what we do, um, we do a ban or not, uh, we're required to go back on the NWRA line to feed the middle old system, which is one of the biggest paddles in the area, which from, uh, Canyon Street east all the way to Washington Streets. Called the middle old system, uh, that's one of our biggest systems that we have.
So, can I just stop you on your question? So, you think it's inevitable, either with or without a water ban, we're going to be on NWRA water?
Unless we get a lot of rain in the next few weeks.
Well, we're going on vacation next week.
Usually I go far.
It's usually a couple of jobs, it's not like on vacation, so.
So you're in another area of water all the time anyway?
I know.
Correct.
Uh, but I'm just curious, because.
Actually, you were.
I am too.
I was.
Because, I mean, this is something we've never done in this town.
That's correct.
As far as you can remember, and you grew up here, so you can't really pay attention if you were.
Very young, yeah.
So this would be something new, so I guess, my question is, by putting in a water ban right now, you know, it's August first, but right? You know, so essentially, a month, maybe two months of the season, you know, what, how's that going to help the town?
Well, I, I'm just trying to get more days, you know, but I think it will help, uh.
Yep.
I don't know, I still don't think it's going to be a hard issue. It's hard to, uh, talking to the other communities to do this, you know, everyone, you're going to get calls, we're going to get calls from people, you know, not watering, water too late, you know, you, you get that scenario going on, uh, but I just don't believe it's the right thing to do. I really don't want to do it, but, you know, but I think we have to, I just think it's the right thing to do.
These towns, sorry, these towns are listed here, are these all NWRA towns, or are these people?
Yeah, these, uh, so like, uh, there's a, MasDEP has a, um, website that kind of summarizes all the water use restrictions across the state. So I, I picked a few, um, in our region to, to kind of show as an example. Some of these may have a backup supply from NWRA, but I think all of these, NWRA is not their primary supplier, or they don't have the level of supply that we have from NWRA.
So what are towns like around us doing, like?
Around here, most of them.
Fellington, like?
So, NWRA is not implementing any mandatory water use restrictions currently.
Yeah, well, uh, Quavon is at ninety-four percent capacity, so NDR is not having supply issues, right?
They usually have one of the other trails we have, and then we never had either, because we had our own reservoirs and we had that connection, so we're good to go. I just want to let everyone know that we did have a lot of problems, I think Mike was on the board, uh, you know, with Jerry Watt. You're taking transmission and changing the flow, it starts taking particles off the, the water mains, this causes some havoc. We did get through it, it was three months.
But you, but you said it's inevitable we're going to do that.
I, because I do believe that, I've seen it rain coming, it was two million gallons a day, we, we figured, I don't want to say this, but forty-five days, if we continue to, what we're doing right now, we'll have to go on and, and. That's our projection, we're going to get a lot of rain.
Which will cost more.
I haven't, I haven't had that, but done before.
Yeah, we've done it, but the, you know, that's kind of what we're heading here, wanting to refill, but it's also a cost-effective way.
Good example, if we do six months of NWRA starting, you know, late August, September, roughly about four hundred thousand dollars for six months. It's roughly over one point one million dollars, you know, through the year, um, but that would come out of the, uh, you know, the P and R's, in three years' time.
But we have to be, but at the same time, since it's been so, you know, rain drive, we have to be making a lot of money.
Yes, we have.
It's so deep down in the end, right?
It does.
Well, we get, we get charged more, right, and it affects our assessment.
Assessment becomes a serious issue.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not just like, we'll get, we'll get a higher bill for August and September, we'll get a higher bill for next years as it kind of gets averaged into our overall, um, NWRA.
I just feel something, you know, we should try.
So you mentioned brown water, is that in the area that gets switched from town to NWRA?
Correct.
Because we are connecting a pipe that hasn't been used for a while?
Nope, it's always a used, but it's going from Winchester water to NWRA water, and then we change the direction, so that's where it's strung out from. Maybe, I'm not sure, uh, the water comes, like I said, down South Porter Road, South Porter Road, down to Main Street, and goes toward Woburn off of Washington Street, going north. Now we're going to make it go south, so you're changing the whole flow.
Because our, our connection point is at Forest Street, so once we open that K and P, the flow is.
So it goes south, now we're going to go north. But it just causes.
I, I get it, I get it, it's just, but it's inevitable, we're going to do it no matter what.
Unless we get a lot of water, I just want to, I just, I'm predicting.
So I, I just, I just, for a town that's never had a water ban, and we have an NWRA, you know, that's staying, you don't need to have a water ban at this point. You know, people are gonna, you know, essentially, they're going to lose their lawns, uh, you know, they're going to lose plants, and it's going to cost them, you know, money to replace them. So, I can appreciate, you know, what you're saying, but I'm struggling with the fact that, you know, how is this going to help us in the long run? You know, if it's, you know, if we're talking about, you know, quality of water, well, you're saying it's inevitable we're going to switch anyways. If we're talking about, you know, cost, well, we've made a lot of money because it's a drive to pour water crazy. So, that's just where I land on this, before we do something, it's never been done in the history of the town, okay? And I'm sitting in this seat, so.
I, I have a third thing, is that it's really only necessary in the areas that are drawing town water, right?
It is, it is, but like.
No, I, no, you know, from a fairness standpoint, we don't want to say only one part of town, because we know, well, there's two issues, right? So on, on the one hand, from a fairness standpoint, I agree it should be townwide. The problem is, from a compliance standpoint, and from a, um, people feeling that it's a justified water ban, right? People will know, well, if they're on NWRA water, they're just doing this to be fair, they're not doing, you know, we're not doing this because it's necessary, right? So it cuts both ways, from a fairness standpoint, I agree it should be the whole town, but from a compliance standpoint, and for the town to accept that the water ban is needed, we're banning, we would be banning in places where it's really not needed to ban, right? So that it cuts both ways.
The only thing, uh, Beth, to say, the assessment would help us overall, even with, you know, NWRA full of three D's, but.
Yeah, that's, it's just something that we need to consider. I'm not coming on either side of that, it's just something we need to consider.
I just want everyone to be aware, that, that's all.
I, I, I mean, environmentally, with the level of drought, it's, you know, even though it's only affecting one part of town that's, that's on the town water, for people to be considered above their water use, while NWRA is, you know, and Quavon is at ninety-four percent, but, you know, like, it is very dry. It is a pretty big drought, it's going to get really hot, but in the next week or so, I think you're. It's, it's going to be, um, you know, it's, it's going to be really hot, and so like, it, it, this, while it's unprecedented and I haven't done it before, it could be something that, you know, does start happening in the future with, with the weather. And I think the, the question I have is really considering the, uh, with the work on the reservoir, um, are there sort of environmental risk or concern takes if that gets really low to, the, and this is out of my, the, the composition of the reservoir, or plants, or, or things like that, like things that are happening that might be kind of a consequence of having a, you know, severe drought and very low water flow during the time.
The water ban number would, would change any levels in the North Reservoir, because we're not taking, we're not pumping from the North Reservoir. We, we brought it down to the level it was part, and then it has gone further down because of the drought that we've had.
We were required to invite the PD for the download.
So Jay, when you decide to reduce all NWRA water.
We have, uh.
Get down to Jimmy, we have.
You'll get to that, we know you can't.
We don't have, uh, no, so.
And we, we'll work with, we'll work with Weston Sampson to.
Yeah.
You said that's about forty-five days away, if we don't get it significant, right?
So, so could we reassess this in two weeks, at our August fifteen?
You can, Jim.
Or is asking, it's just, it's kind of weird, do the dog days of August, and I just, you know, I'm thinking of the people that, you know, put in lawns this year, put in, you know, the plants and stuff, and they're all going to lose them about half Thursday.
Well, like I said, this town in the eighties did a lot of, you know, construction on the water mains, and that was one of the things we did for that reason. So we could get water, you know, with the NWRA, obviously have water available, so we can build full NWRA, but it's, it's, like I said, it's going to cause some disruption.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, Rich, is, um, I mean, I, I think we can do something, you know, even if it's a recommendation or something in the meantime, just so people are conscious of their water use during this period of time, because I think that, honestly, I don't think people would be shocked if we said, for how hot it's been in Dry, if we said we need to alternate on, on even days, or whatever we need to do, you know, there, this is what's happening in a lot of communities. I mean, most communities I've lived in, there's been water bans, you know, um, over a period of time, and, um, it, it's actually, um, kind of semi-permanent locations now, and that's kind of growing, so, um, I, I think this is a, a real, um, pretty particular event that we're trying to solve for. So, um, we've been, we've been lucky because of our existing infrastructure, but.
Like I said, this construction wasn't going on, we, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have this.
Yeah.
What if we take an intermediate step for now, for the next two weeks, and we say, no sprinklers before nine AM, or, uh, uh, after nine AM?
We had nine AM after, we had nine AM.
I would even go for seven PM, because between five and seven, it's really warm, and a lot of, if you're, if you have automatic sprinklers, like, most of it is being evaporated, right? And so.
Maybe we can encourage people to say, uh, hey, this is going into effect, so we can avoid, uh, you know, a broad, you know, ban over the next two weeks.
Believe they have, have the right to involve, you know, that'd be something to do by rights.
Or can make a recommendation for certain days or certain, you know, times.
So, we had, Jay, Jimmy and I had talked, um, about looking at what other communities are doing, our recommendation was that, and this was, when it was proposed mandatory, so you can, you know, change it hardly, like, um, that outdoor water being only allowed on Saturday, Tuesday, and Thursday before nine AM and after five AM. That's usually in line with what quite a few other communities have implemented.
Just wanted to make it voluntary for, see what we got with that.
So I've seen it where, um, it's different, like, you have outdoor with those hours, but then if you have an automatic sprinkler system, it's restricted even more, because people can then set it up more easily than if you're out there with a hose. You know, you don't want to force people to go out there at eleven PM with a hose, but if you have an automatic sprinkler system, you can set it to water at five AM.
Right, very easy. Uh, we also allow, we'd be careful, this, 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 the chairman people spend a lot of money, uh, there is sometimes allowable for people doing new construction, you know, putting sod in, you know, to get their house done, if they allow, you know, some of that, we can, we can.
And, um.
We, we started that to link in school, water twice a day.
That's good, so, so you get a problem, and that's what.
We have a problem, we also.
Um, and, you know, I know for a while, we had advertised, um, you know, rain barrels as well.
Yep.
We were selling, we still do that, and it might be a good time to remind people to do that as well. I've got a, a couple of those, and I'm surprised how much they fill up, especially, I've got one kind of coming off the air conditioner as well, right? Because my, and that, the, the, I mean, it's a, it's a lot, right?
It is a lot.
So, um, it's, it's a bit of a hassle, I guess, uh, but it's just another way to, I guess.
I, I think also articulating, you know, what, what does a, uh, non-central watering ban mean, um, so that people understand, like, you know, don't go out and stand there with a hose every morning for, at lunchtime, every day.
Washing dry.
Uh, but, but you know, what, what does that mean, and, and what is kind of, um, appropriate versus inappropriate use? I, I just, you know, the, the state of the drought, um, has killed some of my, you know, it just sucked dry cucumber within, like, two or three days. But letting people understand, like, what, what does this mean, because I, I, just generally, I'm concerned, you know, over time, it's something I really need to figure out.
Believe it or not, this is when people forget they water off some lawn, and when they get this built in January, they'll have to do the sprinklers, so that's another thing. This would help them remember that, you know, this is not really good down the line, because you're going up that hill, it's kind of, you know.
So could we put together an educational?
We do have a pamphlet, I was ready, I put all this out, I have a pamphlet, we're ready to go out, but the decoration kept on changes, I had a stock press. So, yeah, we have a pamphlet, we're prepared to send out.
Maybe we can just put glasses around, you know, just posters on Facebook.
Yeah, I, I am going to do a mailing, no matter what.
We do tonight, though. Maybe on the, um, on the screens, we have to dump these.
Yeah, no, I was going to use the message boards, but whatever you got, whatever you come up with.
So do we want to change best language, that it's, you know, we're requesting voluntary water, and that you only water, um, on Saturdays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, before nine AM and after five PM, at this point, and then reevaluate it two weeks?
What are people thinking?
Cynically, the same thing will happen, it's mandatory.
I think it's getting people used to the idea that this is, Winchester might.
You'd be surprised.
I mean, we might, yeah, the only thing, so I would put it later for automatic sprinklers, because we don't want people to think that putting the sprinklers at five PM makes sense, not just because it's, it's the hottest time.
I think seven PM, seven, seven PM up to nine AM.
That's usually what Rachel's running through the sprinklers.
Probably like walking out at four o'clock, I'm going all the way to Allison.
Yeah, the, the police have been called a couple of times.
Oh, yeah, automatic sprinklers, right? Now, the, if you're, if you're out there, like, in the heat, with the hose, that's okay.
Okay, well, let's try that and see, you know, starting to come back to that way.
I think you need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote?
Well, I think you should.
Before we vote, uh, are we going to use a nine oh one, or what are we going to do?
I think we should.
Everybody is. Are we doing three days per week?
Yeah. Voluntary.
So we'll say there's a voluntary water ban, and outdoor water is allowed only on Saturday, Tuesday, and Thursday before nine AM and after seven AM.
Five, seven.
Outdoor water is recommended.
Thank you. Do we need to, let's see, any questions for that?
So I moved the, the institute of recommendation for, um, outdoor watering institutions for Saturday, Tuesday, Thursday before nine AM and after, like, seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Voluntary. No, voluntary.
So, uh, so move that we want a voluntary, um, restrictions on outdoor watering for Saturday, Tuesday and Thursday before nine AM and after seven?
Is there a second?
Hold on a favor?
I have.
Thank you, appreciate it. We'll we'll be back in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Nine after medication.
Okay.
I've heard the state is thinking you have to do like their own statewide, like it. See what, see what.
I guess.
Thank you.
Conditions, so that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, um, just quickly on the Lynch School replacement project, just to give everyone an update, um, and I don't think we're allowed to camp, but, um, you know, it was when we last met, um, you know, in that emergency meeting, thanks everyone for for joining in, we had a, um, you know, a kind of dire situation with the Lynch project, um, and the transfer of the wet wall field uh, in order to to build it. So, uh, we sent the letter off, um, on Thursday afternoon, um, and, you know, I have to, you know, give kudos to our staff, especially back at the work, um, seemed like they all dropped everything to get this done. It was a Herculean effort, uh, with our team, our legislative delegation, uh, the governor's office. Called, um, you know, a lot of people to help us, uh, and, you know, they kind of all answered the call. We got murdered Friday midday, uh, the governor, um,'s office made some changes to our bill, um, but they were willing to set, uh, submit the legislation that they submitted at late Friday afternoon. Uh, and at that point, you know, Rep. Day and Senator Lewis in our offices took, you know, the, the House and Senate and did a fantastic job. And I was happy to report that it passed both, um, branches, passed to the House on Saturday, passed to Senate on Sunday. Uh, and it leaves the governor's signature, which he has ten days to sign. So, um, thank you, everyone, it was truly a team effort. Thank you to, um, Jay Calligan in his office for, you know, working, you know, I think as needed. It was like we had on speed dial, uh, thank you, Mina even helped out, uh, you know, as well. So it was a great team effort and I'm happy that got accomplished, happy that problem solved. And, you know, it's, um, a good, uh, good lesson and, uh, when we all work together, you know, we accomplish anything. Thank you to the governor as well, very gracious of him to, we serve our bill, especially such a busy time, uh, I built a scale of an hour. Told you should take responsibility to pass, but, you know, we did an hour, so we appreciated that, you know, it allows us to keep our Lynch School project on on task, so thanks everybody for all their hard work, we'll look at that. So that's the update there, I'll let you know when the governor signs it and, you know, make sure I give a hand for everybody.
Thanks to everyone on that, I mean, I think when we were talking about it and we're seeing it was kind of like, there's a five percent chance of this getting done, so.
Ten percent.
Appreciate it.
Okay, um, fall town meeting articles, I don't think there's, um, anything really to discuss tonight. I did send, uh, have a copy of the letter that we're gonna send out to town meeting members tomorrow, I'll give it to all of you. Go ahead.
Well, we agree that the ADU would not be for fall town meeting, that we would, uh, so I think we should remove that. Is that for, uh, the ADU working group will bring something for, break that meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of went back and forth on this, um, I, you know, these are all possibilities, I guess. So I don't know if we actually agreed on that and I don't know what's, I just listed everything, um, and it was in Beth's list today, so I I I threw it on there. So, you know, whether it's a one percent chance or a hundred percent chance, I have no idea, but I just wanted, I want to be over encompassing rather than under. So, you know, based on our G meeting, I don't know where it's gonna happen, what's gonna happen with it, but, um, I just left it on there, on the list.
I mean, the ADU working group told us that they're targeting the spring, it's not gonna be in the fall, you know, so I think we shouldn't put this there because it sets the expectation for town meeting numbers that there's going to be something related to ADUs and, uh,
Well, I said, yes, it blows the list of topics and potential articles for fall twenty twenty two town meetings that the select board may be discussing at future meetings. You know, whether all this gets on there, you know, I don't, I don't know, it's only.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had a timeline, um, that we were picking this up and, you know, this came out of the housing production plan, it was a recommended policy and this housing policy, right, and the select board had been leading the way on that, so I think that's where it comes up. And the reason that we waited and we've been really, um, trying hard to push this forward at the, the Housing Partnership Board over the past couple of years. And we waited a little longer than we wanted to, basically, um, we've heard a lot from the Council on Aging and from residents that this is really important that we move forward with it, so, um, uh, you know, it it kind of came out of nowhere that there was this ADU working group that kind of picked up something that was on our work plan and I think spring is way too long. I mean, I'm certainly gonna put it on, um, you know, myself if the board doesn't want to and, um, it's a warrant article, so I think it's fair to have it there. And it's it's letting town meeting know that this, this is something that's, um, that we see as urgent and and we've been talking about it since twenty seventeen, so, um, I think, um, you know, it it to communicate that town meeting, I think, is, um, is fair. So I I think if we're gonna spend a year communicating or, you know, really a heavy informational push on something, it should be the CPA. That that is the most significant legislation that we are taking up over the next however many years. So, um, this I see is much smaller, we don't need all that time. And I went down with the ADU working group and, uh, we were at the farmer's market talking to people. People were surprised that this wasn't in existence already and saw no problem whatsoever. So, um, with the CPA, it's a little bit heavier of a lift because we also have to convince residents, not just town meeting. So for this, it's a lower bar now, um, from two thirds down to majority, um, and something that there is uh, absolute support between all stakeholder holder groups that this needs to happen. So I I, you know, I I I don't think waiting really benefits residents, I mean, it really, um, we we should have been we should have been out there a year ago, um, so that's, that's, you know, so I I don't think it hurts to communicate that to town meeting that it's gonna be, um,
To, I mean, I disagree. I disagree, so any changes come from the planning board, right? And the planning board has put together the ADU working group and they have a timeline that they're working towards and I don't see any reason for this board to step on what the planning board is doing, just so that, you know, so that we can claim credit to doing it. Uh, when there's a clear timeline from the planning board that they've organized a working group and they're working on it, uh, and to try to, you know, wind up for one prior town meeting, uh, to do it, I think is inappropriate and, um.
See, Mar, I think, I think, let me just, for a second, Rich, I I think questioning the intent of why I want to move forward with this is not right and not fair. So, um, I think we, as I said, um, this is part of the select board's housing production plan.
The, the housing production plan is not a select board, it's a select board and a planning board.
I understand, and when I first brought this to the board, what we talked about here, um, as a board, was asking Beth to see if the planning board wanted to sponsor a joint article with us. So we're not trying to go above anybody or we're not trying to claim credit, um, the, I I don't know what credit we could possibly receive from it. It's just moving forward policy that's been in our work plan, prioritized for, you know, a number of years. It's something every stakeholder in this community wants. I I don't see that there needs to be a year of education on this and there's, there's, you know, there's been a couple of information sessions and all the people that already believe in it are the ones that are going to it. Um, and we're putting off a absolutely necessary change, so I would hap- happily, you know, work with the, the, I think it'd be a strong article if the Council on Aging, the Select Board, the Planning Board, if everybody moved forward with this, it's not, it's not.
And if that's why the ADU working group was put together, so that it's not just for the.
So hold on for a second, so, so again, as you can see, this will be a topic that will likely be discussed at some point, okay? Um, you know, Mike just mentioned, you know, if we don't put it on, he's going to put it on. So it's gonna be a topic that becomes before the select board. All I'm trying to do is communicate to the town meeting members that, you know, this is where we're headed, you know, this is what, this is, this is a, this is your TV guide for what will happen. You know, we TV guy anymore, right?
That's fine, I thought we had settled it last time we talked, clearly we haven't and it will still be brought up, so that's fine, you can leave it at that.
Yeah, so, and and when, if it does come up, it may not, uh, then, you know, we'll deal with it then. But this is, um, you know, this is just a list of everything that, you know, I went back with that, compiled the list, and this is what, um, you know, we had on there. So, um, really just, I just want people to tune in, um, you know, and be able to participate, so, um, that's the, that's the goal. I do need to fix the, I don't know what happened to this paragraph down here, already, there's, this sentence got. We'll fix that later.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's like a that's okay. So anyway, that's gonna go out tomorrow, uh, and then, you know, that kind of just is, um, some of the items that will be, you know, covered, the rest of it will be.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
In terms of when we last discussed this and, um, that whether we were sort of voting on or sharing that that was voted on, this is in doubt, um, are we, we're kind of having you sign in on as a chair on our behalf to be to to is there anything else that needs to take place around this?
I thought we did it the last time, but, you know, it's up to you.
Yeah, no, I I I don't remember, um, if we talked about like is this a company by something that says the select board has.
I was just gonna send this along and 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 I don't think it needs to accompany, I don't, I don't know what else we're accompanying it.
I think the letter has has everybody's name, it's kind of assumed, but it's the chair, I mean, that's pretty common, the chair acts in the board's behalf in terms of communication like this, and we did it for, um, for the special time meeting for water film, so.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't think we need to take any further action on that, because I don't think there's anything else for fall town meeting articles, because I haven't talked to Griffin.
It's only August first.
It's August first, but we have, we have essentially two meetings before the warrant closes on September twenty third. So we've got August seventeenth, September twelfth. So, I know it's far away, but it's really not. Okay. Arpa funding?
So, um, I gave everybody two tables. One is, um, kind of a status update on the original staff recommendations that, um, we made. I guess it was back in May at this point, um, and just noting which ones have been funded and, and to be honest, we've funded a portion of of most of them. Um, we're still waiting for a few pieces of information about the downtown traffic and pedestrian improvement, so I'm not quite ready to try the board to vote that scope and fee, um, just yet. Um, and the other pieces, um, we're still working on, um, some information at the staff level with the DAC in terms of what would make sense. The town hall work is sort of the highest priority, but there's a little bit of coordination that happens with the HDAC projects, so we're not quite ready to make a formal final recommendation there yet. Um, premium pay, I think, is something that we need to discuss kind of more globally. Um, the risk assessment, we are working currently with the school department and our consultant, who is doing work currently on the town hall building to kind of lay a roadmap out of where we want to go over the next few years, um, and what we might want to prioritize in terms of investments with Arpa funds. So I hope to have something to the board in September about that. Um, and then the other projects, obviously the turf fields, um, is out to bid, um, the Leonard Field Playground, we've started, you've funded the master plant at the last meeting. We have first hundred center contract, um, and he was meeting with DPW and, um, the Recreation Department last week to to kick that study off. Um, about safety dispatch equipment obviously was funded, um, like in school playfield, I I think with the recent work that DPW was on, it's probably, um, no longer a high priority for this list. Um, and then the Mystic School repairs, we obviously funded that initial evaluation. So, um, there's more to come on a few of these requests, but I think we've done a pretty good job of kind of checking off the 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 critical ones, which is exciting, um, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then the second table I provided is just the, goes back to the one that we originally put together after we did, uh, kind of the initial sweep of projects. Um, I just added a status column for those projects that you you funded. Most of this are are not, most of this is, uh, not municipal requests, um, so most of this are just things that have not been acted on at this point for consideration.
So the next so so the next step in this process, um, you know, obviously, there's a couple of ones that are still outstanding. You know, obviously the Swan Washington Street projects, you know, we'll see what the RFP say, um, or RFP, uh, and then, you know, figure out what we want to do there, but, you know, that might be a scenario where we're using some, you know, considering using some Arpa money for some of that project. You know, then we've got this, um, we've got the school, the school requests, then we've got, um, you know, some of these private entity, which is a private, like, community organizations requests as well, so, um, I think what I would suggest I'm open to suggestions, but, you know, we, we, uh, next up, we kind of figure out the Washington Swan Street piece, uh, and then, you know, see where we land after that. And then consider some of these others, I'm happy to, I'm just kind of football, so happy to consider other suggestions.
That's gonna be the big one, so we should, we should know what's needed there before. Let someone else. Okay. Dave Austin?
Um, just in terms of timing, um, you know, I don't see anything in here that would have, um, further end year term requests, but I also wonder, you know, is there anything that's kind of expired in this list that may may no longer, um, maybe rather than like the cultural district website, I think maybe they they did that together already as a small piece, but, you know, just wondering if before we can tackle that next up, um, as an evaluation.
Yeah, it might make sense to have somebody in the town meeting's office, like Gem or someone, just reach out to these organizations and say, you know, they've changed. You know, one thing I I just had a question, you know, when you talked about this, some of these, like, I didn't know if we've got money from other sources, like ambulance equipment and stuff like that, I didn't know if that's something in a different way or.
Yeah, sorry, I was sort of, uh, the ambulance equipment, um, was funded through, um, a state, um, earmark. So we, you checked that one off the list as well.
So while we're dealing, waiting on the Washington Swan, maybe we can just kind of pick this up a little bit, um, and see. I know the schools were going back to their list, I think, uh, looking at different things, so, um, so just maybe, you know, follow waiting. Does that make sense? Anyone have any other ideas? Anything else on Arpa tonight?
No, we didn't.
All right, um, we just did close in here, um, next thing we did is the work plan, um, so we just did, you know, an updated work plan, um.
The only real big change, I mean, I was like updated kind of status on all these, but I added, um, a section for Arpa funded projects, just to be separate.
I feel like you're a big virgin, though.
Yeah.
It's helpful.
I can put one for everybody.
That's okay, I love this one.
I actually just looked at this, that's a, that's a question about that. In terms of, um, I've heard that there's a little interest in the neighborhood of providing additional funding, so it's really, um, you know, upgrading qualities of the ground in that area that's been in decline for so long, is that help with that work, if there was sort of an interest in, um, in the process?
So, do we have to, right? So, do we have to, right? Donation to the town, or gift and kind, you know?
I think in this case, it would probably be donations, since we're funding some portion of the work, and there could be additional. Capations at times towards the project, certainly done that before.
And, you know, that was that we've done in the past, if there was a specific thing that, that an neighbor wanted to raise money for, if it was, you know, Swinset, or for what, you know, then.
Backwards.
Yeah, that could be, yeah, I mean, that's not gonna, gonna drive the fundraising, but it, but then, then it can be either built and constructed or purchased and then put into us, because sometimes it. Makes those donations go farther, because, you know, to get involved with our stuff, everybody just runs up into that, so.
Um. Yeah, so that's, that'd be great. And I think, you know, some of the stuff, you know, I don't know where we bury the state budget, or, you know, in the next ten, fifteen days, we'll probably see, you know, if any, any earmarks or anything like that, for some of the special projects, we agree. Any other questions about the work plan, or comments, or anything not on here, or on here that you want to?
I have a question on the fall spirit night.
Yes.
Do we need any action from the board?
That's done. We, we, we closed the streets at this point, we voted that.
Yeah, do we need any other action? Is there any way that we can help publicize it? I mean, I know last time we did it, it was a really, really cold night, but still, a lot of people showed up, so.
So yes, last year was a cold one, I don't remember, I thought it was warm. We had all the high school, so. Do you want to pay for, do you want to pay for fireworks for Saturday? That's what I'm working on now.
Well, I mean, do you need to raise, like, didn't we, you know, do we need to put something on social media, right?
Yeah, so there's, so Dana at the chair, Chair of Commerce, Magda Ferrari, kind of working together. We've met a couple of times, just I've seen from the chamber side, and did bring stuff out, and soon as we have stuff, we'll put up, but there's. There have been more organizers here, wasn't there, together in the last minute, so we should be able to get stuff out. Already, the high school organizations all know about it, and, you know, hopefully. It's gonna be a women's field hockey game that night, like a Tuber, under the lights and stuff, so it should be good. Very competitive, so it should be good. And then, we're trying to do, possibly, we're on my TV, right, is we're trying to do fireworks for Saturday night. At Manchester Field, and then have the race Sunday, you know, like a weekend, and I think, you know, merchants are being asked to run specials that weekend, it's kind of like reintroduce, you know, like going back. Tell the merchants of town, shop a little again, and kind of don't act until, until the. Obviously, it's a rush. But if you want to help out, like, I believe, I put you in touch every morning, the more than, I think the same band will be playing, I mean, they've got everything lined up, so. The chambers, they don't know that. Uh, anything else on here, or none on here? Thanks, Matt, for updating it.
Sure.
I have just a question about EV charging stations, are those, does anyone know, are those getting put in?
So I just signed the paperwork today, it sounds like there's a couple of issues we're still working through, so. I think we'll definitely do the ones in Jenks, but second location is kind of harder to nail down, so.
Okay, at this point, I think there's nothing else for that on the agenda, so if you want, you can accuse yourself.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Make sure I help. Okay, so next up, you know, we have town manager search, town manager evaluation on here, and I think, you know, we can consider both items at the same time. But Anthea and I and Mark had a call with Bernie Lynch and his team from Community Paradigm Associates, and that was last season, right? It was last season, yeah. And, you know, they kind of, you know, walked us through options for conducting a town manager search, and, you know, what their recommendations would be. He answered, we took a lot of your questions that we talked about in the first meeting back, and this is kind of, you know, what resulted. So what they're recommending we do is that the select board, that we don't use the search committee, that the select board maintains jurisdiction of the search, but that we. Appoint a screening committee to screen the applicants. And you can see in here, they have the timeline, but basically, why they recommend, you know, a screening committee is to maintain confidentiality. We mentioned that the last time, but, you know, the select board is the one that has to, you know, look at applications, and everything's public, and you're not gonna get, you know. All, a lot of people do apply, right, because they're not gonna stick it in their echo, you know, it's just gonna be open to the public, if they're gonna be a finalist, that'd be one thing, but. So that allows the, the screening committee to operate, you know, in the, you know, the executive session for that process, but what they thought. What they like to see is a select board, you know, essentially build the job profile, and they would work with us first to build a profile, you know, for candidates, they, they included a ready one in here just by example. And once we do that, you know, this, this timeline, if you look at the timeline, if we were retaining their services, you know, if they'd have an introductory meeting, should be the process. They have a consultation with us, that'd be the week of, that'd be next week and a week after, then, you know, they get, you know, supporting information from staff and us, and then. Put together a position profile and a brochure for us to consider by the end of the month. You know, early in September, they would review this, you know, review that profile of us, they would advertise and recruit for four weeks, you know, towards the end of September, and then they would, you know. Also conduct screening reviews with the screening committee, and then we would have, you know, essentially, we would interview the finalists, you know, hopefully by. You know, mid-November, we would have, you know, a selection at that point in time. This is kind of the timeline we built out, they thought. This is the process they recommended, they, you know, they thought that this process would yield, you know. Quality candidates, they said there's no right or wrong time to really have a town manager search, however, you know, you don't want to be bringing someone in, you know, in, in like early winter. Late winter, early spring, when you, you know, a bunch of seasons really going, and, you know, you have town meetings, it's just never, it's never really a good time to do it, you know, because doing it in June is the end of the school year, so. You know, they thought this timeline would make sense. They have done. I think it was about eighty searches in the last six years, they've done seventy percent of searches, and they said that two-thirds of towns have basically turned over their, their leadership. You know, the last twenty-five years. They're both former, Bernie, John, are both former, one's a former town manager in Chelmsford, one's a former.
Lowell.
Lowell, yeah, Bernie was a.
Bernie Lowell.
Yeah.
And John was a.
Sorry, I was. And, you know, I, I checked with a couple, just other references out there, they come highly recommended, you know, their search firm. So there's two options in screening committees, there's one where, you know, they would do it themselves, and they have an internal team that, you know, screen candidates, or we could, you know, essentially appoint a local. A local screening committee. They would say that, you know, five to seven members would be the right fit, you know, if you get anything higher than that, it gets hard to coordinate schedules, because you really need everyone there. It's really for a finite time period, so you gotta, you know, if you're gonna point someone to it, you gotta make sure they're available, like, you know, we would pick the time, you know, once we got to an honorary contract. You know, probably be like mid to late September, and you want to make sure that they're available those, you know, two weeks, because that's really the critical part, when they're gonna do their work, and interviewing all the candidates, so you don't want to pick someone who's gonna go away during that time period. But, you know. They had some advice, you know, for, for people, you know, to, to put on there, but really, you know, their, their main focus first would be, you know, what are we looking for in a town manager? What, what's that profile? That's where they would, you know, gather the information, because, you know, you could do a search, but if you don't have, if you don't have an idea what the profile is, what you're looking for, you know, it doesn't, doesn't really work out, so that would be their, their initial focus before even. Meeting up to advertise. Am I missing anything, Anthea?
They also just said in terms of screening committee and process, that having, you know, possibly a public forum with the finalists, or kind of other opportunities for broader resident participation and feedback.
Yes, that's right. We asked, you know, how can publicly involve the process, you know, other than the screening committee, you know, we can have those, those types of forums after. They seemed good, I mean, I was, you know, impressed with their, their work, you know, the vision they presented and what they do, the cost is ten thousand dollars. Flat fee in town, we pay just, we post the advertisements, we pay for the advertising ourselves. Yeah, so, you know, that would be the process.
What they call a screening committee sounds exactly like what we called the search committee last time, so they said no, no search committee, what, what's the difference?
So I asked that question in, in the meeting, and, and when they think of a search committee, they think the search committee basically just takes over the entire process. They're, they're creating the profile, they're creating the timeline, they're, they're, you know, running, you know, the screening, they're doing all that, so, what he says. You know, what he's, what they found the issue is with that is, you gotta keep people on task, and people can, you know. With their expertise, they can, you know, they know what to say, they know how to help us to, you know, not quickly, but, you know, efficiently. Run a search in the sense that we're, they're gonna help us get to that profile quicker, they're gonna help us, you know, get the advertisements up quicker, they're gonna help us, you know, get to the screening process faster. And then, with, you know, them as an outsider orchestrating it, it will just be a more efficient process, whereas they seem, when you just leave it up to the search committee, you really don't have a company like this involved very much.
With facilitators.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So last time, we really had a screening committee that we called the search committee, because we also had a company helping them and guiding.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I wasn't involved, so I don't know what.
Writing their resumes and everything. It sounds exactly like this process.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't involved, I'm just, you know, we didn't use this company before, I know that, in fact, the person we used, we asked about, he, that was like the last search he did. He was, he retired after that, so I don't know if we drove him to retire or what, but.
So I think they'll also kind of bound it a little bit in that facilitation role, they'll, they'll be able to just bring them, bring them to the screening committee. And manage the screening committee so that, that limits kind of the amount of time where that, that piece of the process is happening, and. As Rich said, you know, they, they sort of talked about being very clear with the screening, these are the two reasons it's happening, these are the dates you need to be available for. These dates, so that, that means we're not just gonna tell us.
So tonight, you know, the action item would be deciding whether we want to move with this company, we don't need to, you know, we don't need to put a screening committee in place tonight, or, you know, even in the next couple of weeks, we need to, you know. They'll stay on the schedule as long as the select board stays on schedule, that's kind of their point, so we would need to, you know, have a committee in place by, you know, mid-September. But, you know, the action item tonight is deciding, you know, do we want to proceed with this company, and, you know, get them under contract and get them, you know, working. And then we can, you know, the screening committee part of it can be done at a later point. But that's essentially, you know, where I, I mean, I thought they were good, they, you know, from outside sources, they come recommended, they, they do the majority of searches in the state, so.
I think because if they have seventy, eighty percent of the searches, they're a full role decks, and then if I'm looking for a job, I know who called, right, and they probably already aware that I've been looking, so.
So one of the things they talk about is, what they typically do is they have, you know, their network, you know, basically all managers, assistant managers, you know, they teach, they teach the. Certificate program at Suffolk University, you know, so they have that network too, so, you know, in part of advertising, they're gonna blast it out to their, their network, so.
How many of the searches are they doing right now?
Right now, do we ask that question?
If you're on the website, it lists their active searches, as well as.
It's one of the more competition ones.
I, I do think they mentioned that.
We're kind of on the tail end of it right now, we're like in the off-season in some respects, so. I don't think we're, unless it's some type of, they did mention like one or two towns, I remember, because I think I asked a similar question to that, but we're not. The bulk of them are in, you know, you know, the late, late spring, after, after spring town meetings, so we're not competing against that pool of candidates, but they think there's still very qualified candidates out there looking and stuff. It's just tough, because you have, you know, a lot of, you know, generational people retiring at this point, and not people jumping into the, to the, to the role, so it's, you know, you have turnover.
Did you think the compensation for their ready positions, one, that we're in the same area? Yeah, any salary?
We talked about salary, yeah.
Yeah. Eight one?
Yeah, we were, we were, where we budget, they said we're good.
So they have a active town manager search, and still we have a town administrator in Boston, as well as assistant town administrator in St. Paul.
If we're going to do a search, I think they're the right firm to go with, and to have a, not a search committee, but a screening committee. But I will advocate that we don't need to go search. I think we've had somebody that we interviewed on the job for the last, what, ten months? Who's been doing a fantastic job, who is responsive to this board, who is not just responsive, but is proactive when any issues come up. Who pounds stuff, respects, and enjoys working for her, and I have hired a lot of people in my professional career, and if. I said I've had somebody that I've had on a trial for ten months, and everything else that I just said about her, but I'm going to go interview somebody for a couple hours to see if they're better, like. I, I would be, I would call myself insane for that, so I think that it's not necessary that we go search, the school committee did it, or the superintendent, because they saw the same thing, and. So I'm just advocating, I think we can. I think we can save a lot of risk, I think we can save a lot of morale for our staff if we make that our permanent dimension.
I mean, I can appreciate that, it, I think, you know, in my experience, whether it's, you know, a school administrator, you know, or somebody to fill a nonprofit role, or. I understand from my experience, you know, you may have strong internal candidates, but you gotta validate them, and, you know, so I think, you know, by going through this process, you know. We're going to, the, the question, that question mark will be answered, you know, is there anyone else, you know, that could do it differently, or better, that'll get answered by this process, and I think that would only make, you know. Beth was the candidate at the end of the day, I think that would all make her appointment stronger, so. I can certainly appreciate that, but I think, you know, there's, you know, right now, the way we have this broken up is we've kind of got, you know, the position broke up, and there's three different, you know, people doing it, right? We've got Stacy doing all the financial aspects on it, we've got Mark, you know, doing a lot of collective bargaining stuff with Beth, and, you know, really, you know. Training her, getting her up to speed on certain, you know, areas around that, and we've got that, you know, you know, done a great job, you know, with our board, and, and, you know, we've asked her to do it, and administer on that. So we've got to figure out, you know, one, you know, I think, what are we looking for in a town manager? What, you know, what does our charter say? What, you know, what, you know, what does the town want in a town manager? And then, you know, with that profile, put that together, and then do this process of validating. And I just think that's, that's where we need to go for, for everyone's. Well, but I can appreciate your comments, Mariana, you know, I can get what you're saying, so, that's me, I don't know what others say.
I think our challenge is the next item on the agenda, is that we haven't done an evaluation. I think our challenge is the next item on the agenda, is that we haven't done an evaluation, and, um, ideally, we would have done an evaluation and then, you know, reviewed that and kind of been able to make a determination, um, and I think right now, what the risk would be, we, uh, do an evaluation, we push off the search, and the search becomes at, like, not great timing, um, so it, it's really tough, because we're almost like, and as you mentioned, like, Beth has been really responsive to board and, and good to work with, and we have, you know, we have the perception, but we don't see kind of maybe some of, we don't see what, what would be any evaluation to be able to make an accurate decision.
So, so one thing on the evaluation, because I did speak to Paradigm, um, today, is, um, I asked, uh, about, you know, what they thought about us doing the evaluation, the essential evaluation, right? So they, you know, what they thought about us doing the evaluation contemporaneously with the search, and they, um, and I understand why now, but they were pretty much adamant that we should not do both at the same time, because they said if, you know, if you, you know, if you have a great, um, you know, if the evaluation is great, then no one's gonna apply for the job, um, so it's gonna undermine the process, so their, their recommendation is, since Beth hasn't even been on the job for a year, um, because they're asking all those types of questions, their recommendation would be proceed with the search and do that, how about a mission, how can you back? That was their, they, they said you really can't do both at the same time, and the issue that Anthea's alluding to is, and we talked about this in the timeline, because we both had the same question when we were talking, they were talking, well, you don't wanna bring in someone, you know, late winter, uh, early spring, and, you know, when we looked at their, so, we said, okay, well, we offer the job eleven, seven, or, you know, that week, you know, they gotta give some, oh yeah, sixty days' notice, so they're coming in like January, and, like, isn't that, like, would you say that's the worst, well, no, we didn't mean that, we meant like late winter, like budget season, like February, uh, March, so.
Yeah, but the town manager has to submit the budget February fifteenth?
And so we talked about that too, and they said, you know, and their, the consensus on the call was, well, it's not like we don't have a, a process in place now, we've got, you know, we're, we're pretty good shape, right, we just admitted what we said.
We're in great shape.
Yeah, so, so they said that, you know, that springing somebody in at that, you know, at that point wouldn't, wouldn't be detrimental to the town, and they said there's really no good time to bring somebody in, there never's good time, and so, they just, what they don't like to do is, you know, if there's, you know, a fire burning in a town, bring somebody in, you know, late spring, or some, uh, early, right, late winter, early spring, uh, so this is the, they thought the timeline would work, right, is that, is that fair, what they said?
Yeah, they, they thought the timeline would work, and I think the other thing that they said was, um, you know, we could articulate that our, we want to have Beth to be, like, to make sure that they work forward into the, that process, that there's not a risk that, for whatever reason, um, sure, you know, screened out and not given appropriate, uh, appropriate chances, so.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate everything that, uh, you're both, uh, saying, and, and there are advantages to having a search, I'm just concerned, we have a great town manager now, which the staff is, is executing while they're happy, and I'm just concerned with, uh, losing that during a search, when we already have what I consider to be our, our perfect candidate.
Yeah, um, are there thoughts, anyone else?
You know, if you share responsibility to see, just to compare and contrast, Marhena, it's not that, it's not a indictment of Beth's ability hardly, that's all.
No, I, I get it, no, I understand, in, in ideal world, sure, we would, but I, I'm just concerned about what happens to staff morale, what happens, does anybody leave because we're, we're in the search, right, that's my concern.
I was thinking that they look at the board and they, they see what direction we're going, they have confidence that we're, we're doing the right thing, which may very well want to be Beth, so, I'm, I mean, it could happen, I guess, I think it's a risk that's worth taking. Yeah, I mean, I think that the process here is, is important, and, um, you know, it's not a reflection, um, Beth, I think, when she took over with Mark and Stacy, as you said, you know, with the expectation that we would be doing a search really sooner, um, than, um, than we're getting to now, when it's just, you know, things being as they are, so where we are, I think residents expect that we continue with some sort of process, that we've always had, um, some form of, uh, a, a committee and search and public engagement, and so, um, you know, uh, you know, I, I certainly think Beth's done an excellent job and, um, really picked up and run with things, and done great for the board and the town, so, um, I imagine that, uh, she would be an extremely strong candidate, um, for the position.
All right, so is there consensus among the board to retain this firm, to do a search, as they outlined in their letter?
So what is screening?
Yeah, screening, yeah.
And for, um, best context, for the screening committee, they said, like, they could give you kind of examples of who, who might be on that, so they suggested, like, um, you know, a couple of different roles, it's supposed to be very, and they have, or, or an internal, like, community.
Yeah, what they would recommend is to put a select board member on that, because they kind of get two legs at the apple, and they don't have to prepare the other members, so, um, we asked for examples, make sure it's self, and they, you know, it's kind of mine, hope I think, what we all think, so, um, we can talk about that on a different day, but, yeah, we're asleep, um, and so is, um, so is, is there consensus to move forward with this company and retain them, as outlined in the letter, engagement agreement?
Let's give to me.
Yes, is there a motion?
Yes, I moved that the, um, virgin community paradigm for the town manager search, beginning, I'll say third.
Fourth best, whatever, okay.
Second.
Uh, falls a favor?
Aye.
No opposed, or no, great, that's. Okay, I think that's everything on our agenda, um, I'm just gonna warn everyone, our August fifteenth meeting, um, depending on the RFP interviews, I think we were, you're in Dallas, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if we're gonna have the hybrid technology working to zoom in at that point, not the answer when you call in, uh, but the hope was to really, we could possibly start that meeting earlier, um, you know, somewhere in the sixth, six thirty range, um, just to get through all that stuff, and that would allow us to, you know, that's on vacation the after, um, you know, basically allows to start in September, um, early September twelve, any issue with that?
No, my only question is, are, are we not able to do, um, do we, we have to set up a hi, if we do a hybrid meeting, because they have to be for everyone to have access to it, or could Marra, Marra come in on FaceTime or something like that, or on a, you know?
I can just call in to another, it doesn't have to be as soon.
Yeah, okay.
If it's on the meeting.
Yes.
I just, I'll, we can solve it here, I just don't, there's just one piece of it, so, I don't know if we're ready for the fifteenth, if you.
It is, great.
I know that part, uh, really, the legislation.
Yeah. Yeah, it did, yeah.
There's some benefit to be a little bit more comfortable.
Yeah, no, I think the, the goal would be to allow, I don't want to.
The state has, um, hereby thirty million dollars for municipalities to operate, so.
Well, we just need one part, so.
And that's it.
Literally one piece, literally one piece.
So the, uh, two pieces that we have, uh, for the other two meetings, so that other committees and commissions can have their stuff, and, uh, just about, we want to figure that will be coming before the board for discussion.
So it's just gonna be a busy night, um, we've got a couple of assistant petitions, uh, coming in for town meeting, and, uh, we've got, uh, P interviews potentially, uh, so, it's never so harsh, so it's gonna be a busy one, good news is that is for August.
Good.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? I'll lose a favor.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone, thank you, Jim.
I just need everyone to sign, um.